On behalf of the Town of Silver City Council, I am calling this meeting to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so. Justice Farrow, I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeosymble of perfect friendship among the united cultures. I'd like to invite every, uh, welcome everyone here tonight, and we have our city administration with us. We have a lot of others that will be introduced by different administrators as we go through this budget presentation. Thank you, Chief Portillo, and members of the press and community members for being here. Agenda item two is changes to the agenda. Does anyone make, want to make a change to the agenda? Item three is saravones, and there are none. Item four is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments. First on the list tonight is Councilor Benkoma.
Okay, I don't have much to say other than I'd like to apologize to the Trujillo family that suffered a lot of damage to their vehicles and their homes. Just know that, you know, I know it's frustrating for you all, but just know that we share your, your difficulties that you're having in that neighborhood. And Chief Portillo, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, but do you have a plan in place to kind of alleviate some of those problems?
Yes, Mayor, Council, at this time I met with, or today, actually met with the Grant County Sheriff, Rolvena Weba. We're going to put together a joint operation to target specific areas in the southeast portion of the town. We'll target all criminal activity, traffic violations, and we'll increase visibility, just like we did in the downtown area. But this one's going to be a joint operation with the Grant County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like to thank the Daily Press for doing that write-up that they, that you guys did. I think it's part that not, not only that they're people that live in the community, but the rest of the people here in Silver City and Grant County understand the issues that we're having in that area. Thank you.
Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I just wanted to report on what I did this past weekend, which was I was part of the New Mexico Municipal League's Resolutions Committee meeting. I will be voting at the next meeting at the annual conference for the resolutions that the municipal league will be supporting during the legislative session. There were, I think, ninety-seven of them altogether that we went through. These are the statements that the municipal league works as a group to try to get some bills passed in the legislature. The ones that I thought were of particular interest were the one that's going to be the number one priority, which is to oppose the governor's budget proposals for, or not which, tax reform, excuse me, not budget, tax reform proposals for next year. She was very much in support of some that were, were successfully blocked by the league this past year, and those actually are pretty much a pyramids problem. It's, it is an anti- pyramid-ing argument that the league is making because if the tax report, the tax cuts that she is proposing pass, then communities are going to lose millions of dollars. Albuquerque alone will lose one hundred and ten million dollars in taxes. I'm sure that it's going to affect Silver City as well. It'll affect every municipality, so that's the thing that they're going to be focusing on the most. Two that were of substantial interest, I think, for Silver City were making sure that there are, there's funding available immediately if there are more wildland fires, which this past year, there was a lot of funding available for the north, and the south was biding the whole time to get some too. So hopefully, it'll be everybody this time. And the other one is that a change in workman's compensation to allow for any first responders of any kind to get workman's comp compensation if they have hearing loss or breast, lung, or prostate cancer. And sadly, those things are not listed right now as reasons to get workman's compensation, so hopefully that one will pass as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will echo Councilor Benkoma's comments. We have to understand, and us, the people, town council people, when we're elected to an office, I think that we represent everybody, not just certain parts of the town. So, and I don't mean to step on anybody's toes and all that, but we did have some concerns with district and all that. And I did go talk to him and all that, and I agree with the paper doing a good job and all that. And also, one of the things that they tell the people there that, in my opinion, we all deserve a quality of life. Everybody deserves a quality, a quality of life, regardless of what you do and what you don't do. To me, these people that are trying to do destruction to other, other people's properties and to their vehicles, well, if that's a quality of life, that's, it's wrong. It is very wrong. So why would be, why are we going to help people with that type of problems, create problems for the, a lot of people in the community? We all need a quality of life. So bear with us. We're trying to do what we can do, the best that we can. And also, the police department, they do their jobs, and whatever happened in the court system, happened in the court system. My other comment is that I know it's early, but I will be seeking for reelection. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor Ladner. Keeping it a little bit short this evening, I absolutely want to commend Chief Portillo and Police Department. The new hires that we've gotten in over the past month and having foot patrols downtown has greatly increased his folks' sense of safety, and I've gotten a number of positive bits of feedback on that one. Visibility has been something that a lot of folks have been appreciating on this edge, so I just want to say thank you so much then for that. I look forward then for the continued service of the department. I also want to commend Community Development Department. We very suddenly had to have the community, farmers market have to get moved, and I've been very happy with, and checked in with all the vendors that we had this past Saturday for the temporary, but still extremely positive new setup for the farmers market over at the city property at the old ATM and bank location. That went splendidly, and everybody has been very happy with the move on that. The only thing that I need to bring up this week here, just because the green bins, we knew it was going to be challenging coming in, but I do want to let the city understand that we do not have a very healthy conversation between landlords and their tenants right now. So many people reached out to me to let me know that their landlords never notified them of the water quality report and the letter that we were supposed to send out. And I know that that's a breakdown in sort of the conversation, communication happening with the citizens of our town, but we had another bit of blowback come through this past week with regards to the green bins getting pulled. And the landlords aren't legally required to communicate with their tenants in these ways, and they're the ones that are getting the city notifications. I know the Postal Service offers the ability to be able to do blanket mailings to an entire geographical zip code and subzip code, and I would very much encourage the city to be able to employ that to communicate across to our citizens, as opposed to reaching out to whoever's on the deed or whoever is the property manager, just because that's not hitting. And then beyond that, we've been keeping up with the conversations with behavioral health and response to substance use disorders that we have in our community. And still one of the number one issues that's been coming up, I was able to speak with Sheriff Ian Weaven today about it, and also HMS. We still don't have any group that has fully come up with what the crisis response and crisis intervention team response is going to look like. We know from the paper this past week that the incident that we had up on Brewer Hill this weekend, that there was legal intervention that occurred on the Friday previous to the incident. But as we've heard before, when we have folks that come out of prison, get out of the hospital, get out of services on a Friday afternoon, usually the weekends and days immediately following are the most violent. And if we can make sure to accent what we're seeing as far as one of the gaps, crisis intervention, not rooted in law enforcement, but rooted in mental health care and wellness, is a critical component that we're all still looking for, and is something then that I would encourage everybody to reach out to, everybody that they know to be able to engage with, because that's going to be one of the most key components we've got for being able to improve our situation. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration underneath the Department of Health and Human Services, SAMSA, has really wonderful guidelines that have been well-tested for a crisis response team, crisis intervention team. And if we can start to work to make sure then that when people are having problems, that we can have citizens who care about somebody's mental wellness have connection to resources to be able to get that person housed, get them out of crisis so that we can avoid these issues. I think that's going to get us to a much better and much healthier community. Thank you.
Any other council comments? I just want to remind the public that during the time for council comments, those comments are strictly the personal opinions of the council member. Just like during public input, the public also enjoys the First Amendment's right of freedom of expression. I just have one thing. During my Monday with the mayor meetings, the, the number one thing that comes to me and has been for a long time now has been the homeless situation. And so I guess about three or four weeks ago, I met with Mr. Brown, and since our budget was in such good order, I asked him if we couldn't hire someone to be in uniform and walk downtown and also in the big ditch. He said he'd take it to the police chief, and he did, and the police chief didn't think that was feasible. However, Chief Portillo put together a program that I think is much better, where we do have foot patrols downtown and in the big ditch. And I'd like to ask him to make a few comments about how that's going for him.
Yes, so we put an operation together, set aside some overtime funding that Mr. Brown allows us to work. It was specifically to increase visibility. Now, whenever we have certain issues in the town, we target, again, I'll remind the public, we target specific areas, okay? For criminal activity, traffic enforcement, whatever the case may be, code enforcement, it's, it's target-specific for areas only. In this case, we're getting a lot of complaints downtown of criminal activity, so we wanted to increase visibility, just like what we're going to do at, on the southeast portion of town in that area. Did downtown walks, talked to business owners, talked to citizens walking around. It seemed to me that we were getting positive comments from the community, which I appreciate. I'm glad you brought that up. It seems like you all are getting positive comments and feedback from the operation that we conducted, and we'll revisit that at any time. We put operations together, target-specific for certain areas, and just like any other area in town, if we have a problem, we'll put some together and we'll concentrate on it and allocate manpower and resources to those areas.
Thank you, Chief. And could you also make a few comments about some of the issues that are involved when we try to enforce our ordinances?
Yes, some of the things that, and speaking to my officers and comments that I'm gathering, you know, where, and I want the community to understand is, we, we know you're frustrated. We're just as frustrated, but we're, we're frustrated with you. You know, we know this community lacks resources. We know it is a revolving door system, and we could sit here and talk about it all evening, but our officers are out there. We're enforcing the laws. We're doing our jobs, and we're doing our best, absolute best. We're going to continue to do our absolute best to protect the community, given the environment that we're in today. So there's no questions asked, that we're going to continue to do what we're doing to protect the community and come up with different ways. I might not have the answers. The officers have really good ideas on how to do it, and we're going to continue to move forward, and that's all we can do.
Thank you, Chief. Next is Agenda Item Six, approval of minutes of the July 11, 2023 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on July 11, 2023.
Is there a second? Councilor Benkoma, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is public input, but no one signed up for that tonight. So we move to item eight, which is reports. Mr. Brown, do you have any reports tonight?
No, sir. The, the main stuff that we wanted to talk about was the, the operations that were running in the, on the southeast quadrant and, and downtown. Those are the majority of what we wanted to get out there.
Okay, thank you. Does any council member have, have a question about Town of Silver City issues for Mr. Brown? Thank you. Next is public hearings, and there are none. Next is unfinished business, and there is none. Next is item 11, new business. New Business Agenda Item 11A is the approval slash disapproval of appointment of the town's Labor Management Relations Board. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, per the town's Labor Management Relations ordinance, it's required that the unions, we have three representatives. The unions get together and, and appoint one representative, the town appoints a second representative, and then the representatives that the unions appoint and the town appoints come to consensus and appoint a third member. This year, the, as of, as of, again, the same as last year, the unions have appointed Terry Fortenberry. It's, I would like to appoint Tony Garcia, and then they have gotten together and appointed A.J. Tau. I just wanted to point out that both Mr. Fortenberry and Mr. Garcia have served on both sides of the table. Both have represented the unions on both, from one aspect, and they've represented management as well. So they've seen things from both sides. So I, I think this is a fair representation and meets both sides' goals of fairness.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from Mr. Brown? Councilor Prince?
What union was Mr. Fortenberry a portion, a part of?
The FOP.
And Mr. Garcia?
The IAAF.
Thank you. Counsel, I have both of our police and firefighters.
Police and fire.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the appointment of the town's Labor Management Relation Board.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Prince?
I'll second the motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Benkoma?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is New Business 11B, which is the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2023-14, Resolution of the Town of Silver City, Ratifying a Certain Agreement Between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, dated July 25, 2023, and Authorizing the Executive of Same by the Proper Official of the Town of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, it's required every year that we approve the resolution to be, to be members of the Council of Governments organization. It also requires that we approve the payment. As you see, the, the payment that we provide to the Council of Governments is sixty-nine ninety-three fifty-seven, which is, we get a steal for, for what we're paying. This year, the payment structure is a little bit different for the Council of Governments because some organizations use them a lot more than others. For instance, I'll give you an example. The Town of Silver City, when we do a C2BG application, if it's in Public Works, Peter does it. If it's in Utilities, Robert does it, and we only get background information from the Council of Governments. But in a lot of cases, the Council of Governments has to do the entire process for them. For instance, Columbus, the smaller communities. So they're being charged a little bit more than the base cost each year, just to help offset some of the cost of the added cost of labor and everything for the additional personnel that's required to get all of this stuff done. But with that, we also have to appoint representatives to the different boards and subboards. So the council board member, we're recommending that it be myself and James Marshall be the alternate. The Economic Development Board would be myself and Mr. Marshall as the alternate. And then the RTPO, which is the Regional Transportation Organization, Peter would be the representative, and Mrs. O'Leary would be the backup on that, on that part. So that's, it's my recommendation that we, that we adopt the resolution and continue our, our participation on the board.
Council, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Brown? Councilor Benkoma?
I'd just like to say that Priscilla Luceno is very instrumental in helping a lot of the communities, not, not just only Silver City, but a lot of the smaller communities and getting a lot of grants and so forth. I can tell you that she really helped us get a lot of these federal fighter, fighter grants that we, that we applied for. There was, it wasn't uncommon for us to walk over her after we worked on a grant for her to look over it, and she would also suggest ways to improve our chances of getting these grants. So we were really successful with her, with her help. So she really, this is actually pretty cheap for the services that she provides. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'll, Councilor Prince?
I wish to echo Councilor Benkoma's praise of Mrs. Sarah on the Council of Governments. I also just wish to add then for it that our town's continued support of the Council of Governments, especially in being able to host them in our facilities, has been one of the great things that allows us to be such a leader in our region here. So appreciate all the time and effort that you do to be able to make the COG work, and also appreciate all the work at the COG desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion then. Councilor Connaught.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Resolution Number 23-14, Resolution of the Town of Silver City, Ratifying a Certain Agreement Between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, dated July 25, 2023, and Authorizing the Executive of the Same by the Proper Official of the Town of Silver City.
Thank you. A second. I don't know if I have this wrong on my notes. Mr. Sadio?
Yes.
Was that read the way it is in the minutes, I mean, in the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Do I, we have a motion. Is there a second? Councilor Benkoma?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Mr. Sadio?
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Benkoma?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item 11C, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2023-15, a Resolution Amending the Approved and Adopted Budget for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and for municipal purpose in the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, Transferring and Appropriating Funds Thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, first I'd like to recognize Anita Norero, who is our Finance Director. She does ninety percent of the work, well, she usually does. She's got Dora this year. And then we've got Dora Gonzalez, who's the Deputy Finance Director. She started about four months ago. She'll be taking Anita, Anita's place when she retires at the end of next year. So she helped out with the budget this year. Next year, she's actually going to do the budget, and Anita will shadow her and help her out next year. So I'll start with the budget adjustments. First, I'll go ahead and, Dora, do you want to come up to the podium so you can present them? No, not really. She, I was just teasing. I just wanted to see her sweat. So first, if you'll see, the first page is basically summary of the, where we ended up after the budget adjustments were put in place. Page two is actually the, is increase in revenues that we saw over the year. The biggest changes that we saw last year in revenues were gross receipts taxes came in. We did not, we were not able to budget the, the, the three eights for the settlement, the gross receipts taxes that we imposed for the gross receipts taxes. So much of that is for that, is a result of that increase in gross receipts taxes. And as you'll see later on, it was transferred out to other areas, mostly to, to the, the debt service for the settlement, bonds. And then the second biggest was legislative allocations, and those were increase in, in federal revenues that we received from the ARPO money that we received, the second four million for the rec center. That was the main thing. Do you have any questions on revenues? None? Then, second page is the increase in revenues. Of course, we've got increase in adjustments to the, the general fund. Then we've got the water sewer fund are the major ones, and then decrease in expenditures. The increase in expenditures from the water sewer fund were mostly having to do with grant match, and that's a big part on the general fund. That was a big part, part. Part of it was grant match. The other part was the settlement funds, revenues and expenditures. Any questions there? The next page is budget transfers. We have to, when we receive new grants, we have to, usually the money has to be budgeted in the general fund and then transferred out to the grants, or, or new grants that we received through the year that we didn't know that we were going to get, increased costs in some cases. Do you have any specific questions on any of these? Okay, with that, that is, this, this gets us to the quarterly report, which we will review next.
Yeah, is there other, Councilor Benkoma?
I was on page three and four of that, the transfers. That's, that's, that's it.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor Ladner?
Councilor Prince?
Just in reviewing what we've had the adjustments to then, primarily from this year here, we had an additional $282,000 that got allocated to our golf course here, if I understand the transfer form. Approved budget was $200,000. We had a $282,000 adjustment on that. Of course, we had to increase what our bond debt service was. That was going to be another $138,000. There's more that I got a couple of questions on when it comes to our reviews in the years on it here, but it's great to be able to see everything summarized here and appreciate the work. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anything else on this, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
I'll entertain a motion then. Councilor Prince?
I move to approve Resolution 2023-15, a Resolution Amending the Approved and Adopted Budget for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and for municipal purpose in the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, Transferring and Appropriating Funds Thereof.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Benkoma?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Sadio?
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Benkoma?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is 11D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution 2023-16, Final Quarter Financial Report, Year Ending June 30, 2023. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, the information you have in the, in, in this section of the, of the council pocket is the detailed information that we sent to the state of New Mexico. These all include the, the budget adjustments from the previous resolution. The front page of the previous, from the resolution on the front, the last agenda item, the summary page- the last agenda item, the summary page, that is summary, a summary of all the detailed information that you see here. Do you have any questions about any of it? These basically set out the ending cash balances at, for fiscal twenty-twenty-three and the beginning cash balances for fiscal twenty-twenty-four.
Counsel Prince?
Just because I think that we're seeing fiscal year-to-date, we're seeing what we're looking at for the LGBMS in the previous year. The numbers don't exactly line up. I'm just assuming because we've got the first nineteen days of spending included in this resolution here.
No, it shouldn't be. Which section are you looking at?
So I'm just taking a quick look then at the grand total for all funds that we have available. We have on the header for the LGBMS, it says year-to-date actuals, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. I was assuming that the differentials that we were seeing, where the differences we were seeing was just due to the fact that this is what we have from the print that we have from July nineteenth, from last Wednesday, as opposed to it being what we would see typically at the end of day business going on on June thirtieth.
I don't exactly know what you're referring to.
So when I was reviewing this over here, just taking a quick look on this, then for our revenue year-to-date, we have the thirteen-point-three-six-seven-nine-five-six was what we were budgeting for. And then we have the fifteen million, six-seventy-two, six-seventy-seven that it actually was, that we're seeing on the LGBMS for our general operating fund as revenues totals. Those figures were showing a difference for me from what I was reviewing on what we had then for the adjustments that we approved. I just couldn't find where those amounts were that we were sitting at then. Fifteen, six-seventy-two, eight-thirty-one.
Oh, you're talking about the, doing it by the account numbers, right?
Yeah, so, you know, just for example, then for that fifteen, six-seventy-two, six-seventy-seven that we were seeing on the LGBMS for the general operating fund, on our budgeted revenues over here, we've got fifteen, six-seventy-two, eight-thirty-one.
I think that we, we're going to have to look back. It's so, it's so small.
Right, and I wasn't super worried. Typically, a ten percent variance isn't going to be a thing that I'm going to be the most worried about. Anita?
She doesn't want to talk, but I'm going to make it.
Sorry.
Could you pull the microphone up?
Let's see if I can get the words right, text like this. So on your fourth quarter, the, what was presented on the last resolution, because I cannot submit the budget adjustments on LGBMS until it gets approved. So you're not going to see those budget adjustment numbers on your fourth quarter until I can upload the numbers correctly on LGBMS, if that makes sense.
Absolutely. It's just that we're reviewing, we're approving, reviewing, and just going through all the budgetary items just in a single meeting. So I expect there to be some variances on that one. Nothing that was too concerning, but it just was one of the things that was going through review.
Yeah, it's just a timing issue, and that's with the state and LGBMS and getting approval.
Thank you so much.
Also, the difference might be because when Anita downloaded all of the information onto the state system, it didn't take it?
That was on the budget side, but I got, I had to go in line item by line item and correct it.
So she had to do everything manually because of that. So there might be some small numbers that are wrong, but...
No, those are the actual numbers.
Okay. All right, we'll look at it. It's really small, though.
Any other questions? Is that, is that all for your agenda? Okay, do I hear a motion? Counsel Prince?
I have questions on that one. Question that I've got then for it, just for my own notification then for it. Again, just in the general operating fund, I wasn't aware that we were collecting property taxes with any of the taxation that we do then on the city side. Or we've got six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-four in property taxes, and the previous year, I believe, was twenty-one thousand on that one.
No, that, the average on property tax annually is around, since we raised it about eight years ago, it's been around six-hundred thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty, up to six-hundred, where we're at now.
For the property taxes, if I remember correctly from the municipal league trainings on that one, we have a two percent capacity then for being able to levy property taxes. How much of that are we presently using?
It's not percent. It's based, it's done in mils. It's seven-point-six-five mils is what we can impose. We have two-point-eight-five mils imposed right now. For general operating.
I just confirm those numbers one more time. Seven-point-six-eight-five?
Seven-point-six-five mils. Total max we can impose, and two-point-eight-five is what we've got imposed right now.
Thank you.
And just understand, if we want to raise that, there's tax lightning. So we could next year impose all seven-point-six-five, but we're only going to get a three percent increase because of tax lightning. The state will not allow you to, it to go up more than three percent a year.
One more question. I was just seeing then for it, too, for attorney fees that we have this year then on the hundred-and-fifty thousand under line item five-five-zero-two-zero, presumably then that we've brought our attorney in-house. Hello, Mr. Reynolds. Is that going to be anything separate, or is that just going to be, is that for our cost for in-house attorney? Or is that just going to be what we've spent out then for attorney fees in addition to?
There's different attorney's fees, because, for instance, we've had to, example, we had to hire a subcontractor when the planning issue came up with spin last year. We've got some water issues that we have to have attorneys for, outside attorneys that specialize in that. So it's basically for specialized attorney work.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Mr. Brown, anything else on eleven D?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Ben, Counsel Ben Como?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-twoy-three dash sixteen, final quarter financial report, year ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Kano?
I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counsel Kano?
Aye.
Counsel Prince?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Ben Como?
Motion carries unanimously. Next is eleven E. The approval slash disapproval of Resolution twenty-twoy-three dash seventeen, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Counsel, the only changes from the presentations that I made earlier in the year to this, from that, those presentations to what's happening now, is the insurance issue was the most, the issue that was most outstanding. And we had, in the preliminary budget, I had budgeted eight-hundred thousand dollars for the extra insurance. It came out to be just over four-hundred thousand dollars. So I took the extra four-hundred thousand dollars. We did a, a two-thousand-dollar increase for the exempt employees because that was not included in the previous budget. And then the remaining two-hundred, it's just a little over two-hundred thousand dollars, was put into, I set it aside to capital costs because I'm trying to keep between three and four-hundred thousand dollars out of reoccurring, budgeting as reoccurring, because when the rec center opens, we're going to need to budget for the operations of the rec center. So we need to make sure that we have that reserve of those extra funds for when that operation starts.
Counsel Kano? Any counsel prince?
So, yeah, I was noticing then where we were seeing the liability insurance for what we had previously with the self-insurance fund underneath five-seven-zero-seven-zero that we have underneath our finance, budgeting and accounting budget over here. And it's not on our approving budget for this upcoming year then for it. Under which portion of the budget should we be expecting to see the change for the insurance changeover from the two-eighty to four-hundred that we're expecting?
It's under fifty-seven-zero-seven-zero. It's right there.
I am not seeing that on the budget that we have in front of us here. I'm just double-checking on this. Yeah, underneath operating cost, fifty-seven-zero-seven-zero is not currently on our budget that we have here. It is for previous year? That was one of the discrepancies that I was just seeing. That is my biggest question that I have for our approved budget this year. That's been moved from the two-thousand-four finance budget accounting section to, that's been moved to, it's been moved underneath manager, it looks like at this point. Previously, it was underneath the two-zero-zero-four finance budgeting. This year, it's underneath the manager side of stuff. That, I just needed to know, and I was able to find that.
It's the same budget, but it's, I see it every day.
You were just getting chuckled around me. And other than that, the only things is just, we've got a three-hundred, just for the public certification right now, we've got a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar annual increase then for our law enforcement item here. For our fire, we've got a hundred-and-fifteen thousand. And then sixty thousand then I see for our library, a hundred-and-ten thousand. For parks and recreation, we have a very good budget. And it's so good to see so many line items increase. Appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Most of those are raises.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anything else for eleven E, Mr. Brown?
No, sir.
Pardon?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then. Counsel Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution twenty-twoy-three dash seventeen, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Ben Como?
I'll second that.
Any discussion or comments? Counsel Prince?
Just checking then for it, just because it's my second year right now. We're already into the budgeted year then for it. Typically, we receive the budget before the year begins? No?
No.
We just get a...
The preliminary, but, the preliminary budget is not required to be approved by the council. And so you only get the presentations. This is the only one that requires a resolution.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I'll entertain a motion then. Counsel Ray? Oh, we have a motion. And we have a second. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counsel Kano?
Aye.
Counsel Prince?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Ben Como?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I think I speak for the council when, when I say congratulations, Mr. Brown, and to all of your staff with the tremendous amount of work that you have done putting this together.
You know, one thing that we realized when, when we were done putting everything together, on average, the size of the budget is between, I looked, the last five years, eight years, was between twenty-four and thirty-eight million dollars. If you look at this budget this year, the total budget is fifty-eight million dollars. So there's a lot going, I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't bring my glasses in. But it, things are getting, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on, I just want to say. In fact, our auditors, remember, Mayor, when we had the exit conference, the auditor said, you know what, you guys are getting really big. Things are, there's a lot going on.
Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Brown and I had a meeting about a week ago, and when I left the meeting, I had two pairs of reading glasses in my pocket. Shortly after that, Mr. Brown come running after me, trying to find his glasses.
I couldn't read anything.
Next is Agenda Item eleven F. The approval slash disapproval of notice of intent of ordinance number thirteen-twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the sale and transfer of a zero-point-four-three-six acre tract of real property to Richard Mata pursuant to chapter forty-eight, section forty-eight dash twenty-two, A, five, and D of the municipal code of the town of Silver City. Presenting this will be our community development director, Jackie Olea.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Richard Mata is interested in purchasing a property that's just adjacent to his. There is only one other property owner that is adjacent to the property. They have been informed that the property is looking to be up for sale. They have no interest in buying the property, and there's no legal access to the property aside from Mr. Mata's, where his house is. So he's interested in buying the property from the town. He wants to use it to store his excavation equipment that he has a home business as a, so he wants to use it as a contractor yard. He's done a lot of work in the last year to get the zoning of a portion of his private property to be able to have a contractor yard. And this area is all zoned industrial where he could have a contractor yard. So it's been, I think, almost two years that he's been waiting to get to this moment right now. So we appreciate your time and your consideration.
Any questions for Ms. O'Leary? Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of notice of intent ordinance number one-three-two-two and ordinance authorizing the sale and transfer of a zero-point-four-three-six acre tract of real property to Richard Mata pursuant to chapter forty-eight, section forty-eight dash twenty-two, A, five, and D of the municipal code of the town of Silver City.
Thank you, Counsel Ray. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Kano?
I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counsel Kano?
Aye.
Counsel Prince?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Ben Como?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item eleven G. The appointment of the twenty-twenty-three annual conference voting delegates. Normally, the mayor is the voting delegate, and the mayor pro tem is the alternate. However, as Counsel Kano pointed out, I will not be able to attend the annual meeting. So I am recommending that we appoint Mayor Pro Tem Kano as the voting delegate and Counsel Ray, who's the next senior member of the council, as the alternate member. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Kano?
I move to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Kano as the voting delegate for the annual voting, the annual conference, the twenty-twenty-three annual conference, and Counsel Ray as the alternate.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Prince?
I'll second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. I'd also like to ask the council, since I think most of the, I think all of the council will be at the annual meeting, if you know anybody in the municipal league government, or if you know any mayors or council members that might be a voting member, if you would please go out and lobby for Counsel Kano. She can provide a really important representation for us in the state. Thank you for that consideration. This concludes the items on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I want a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counsel Ben Como. Is there a second? Please?
Counsel Ray?
Counsel Ray? Maybe I shouldn't have gone this route. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned.